Oh, can you please stand for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a recommended action that the board approves, the February 7th, 2023 agenda as submitted. Can I have a motion and a second that the agenda of February 7th, 2023 be approved as submitted? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? No opposed. Okay. Can we have a recommended action, an next recommended action, that the board approves the following consent agenda? The approval of minutes of January 26th, 2023 as submitted, the acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, the approval of requests to dispose of unserviceable textbooks, the approval of memorandum of agreement between the district and PTS or PSTA for additional shuttle runs, and the approval of memorandum of agreement between the district and PEA for robotics stipend. Can I have a motion and a second that the Board of Ed approves the consent agenda? Excuse me.
So moved.
Second. Can we have a vote? All those in favor? Oh, my goodness. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
A lot of pressure.
It is. Yes. Just sat there before. Okay. Our next recommended action is that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund status, cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending October 31st, 2022, and November 30th, 2022 be approved. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor and none opposed? Okay, special reports.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, we have a few special reports this evening. I'll just note too that our Board Vice President Emily Belster is doing a great job in a last-minute fill-in due to illness and our Board President Lisa can't be here this evening and due to business travel Catherine Dean is also not here, which is for the public just to know that's why we have five board members, four is a quorum, so we're good to go. But, you know, everybody needs positive feedback, so you're doing great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And so we do have three special reports this evening. We are gonna, our first one will be our Black Student Union from PHS to present what their club is, what they are working on. We're excited to always hear from students. I know they have been working to be on a special report, so it's great. We're also gonna hear from Mary Sipone around a universal pre-K update, very excited for that, both on how this year's been going and how, what the plans are for next year. And then also, we have Mike Gala, our Director for Transportation, who's gonna provide a transportation update. And if you ever wanna know why we don't have a snow day, it's because Mike Gala is amazing and making sure that our buses are safe, so don't complain to me, it's all the Transportation Department. No, I'm just kidding, I make the decision, so you can email me. But again, we'll start with our Black Student Union, so if students wanna come up, thank you so much. There is a clicker and your slides that you shared with me are in there and you can click through the slides. And if you don't mind, we always, with students, if you could take a moment to introduce yourself and perhaps grade level, that would be great.
All right, first of all, thank you so much for having us here today. I'll start with introductions. My name is Nora Khan and I'm a senior at PHS.
My name is Joe Bear Black and I'm a 10th grader at PHS.
I'm such a down under to be down there and I'm a soph- oh, I'm a junior, sorry.
My name's Isaac Doily and I am a sophomore at PHS.
Okay, great. Now we're gonna get started with our presentation. Okay. So what is BSU? The BSU is the Black Student Union here at PHS and we are an affirming and welcoming space for all Black and Brown students at Penfield High School. We aim to create lasting relationships between our students in this predominantly white community, so really focusing on that space of sanctuary and peace within our school.
Okay. Why are we here? We are here for number one, to share our appreciation for all the changes in the district. Number two, to showcase what we have been doing as a club. Number three, to encourage the board and the greater Penfield community to keep pursuing positive changes in the district.
Why BSU's important in Penfield? Black Student Union is a wonderful community that has created a welcoming and affirming space for Black and Brown students in Penfield High School. Every Friday, we meet to discuss our plans for upcoming events and future school year. We also spend time discussing ways that we can support each other through various challenges and just building community with each other.
Community Building Days. We highly appreciate the Community Building Days that Ms. Wath has coordinated at PHS. The microaggression video and discussion was an important testament to the Penfield Center's whole school districts' passion and willingness to instruct students about an important and sensitive topic. The video was also a fantastic way to educate all students who colors of color, sex, or creed of how to respond of the definition of a microaggression, which is a subtle or unintentional remark that offensive minority group like stating that, well, I didn't know that Hispanics could speak English or I didn't know that girls could do math. It was also, it was also a very good way to educate students of how to respond to, when you, I tried to respond when you experience a microaggression. Although this topic was the target of ridicule from some students and staff, we are aware that changes do take time and we highly appreciate the Penfield Center School Districts for their investment in a more diverse and anti-racist community.
Okay. This year at BSU, in celebration of Black History Month, we are presenting on the morning announcements sharing daily facts about important Black figures in America. We are also celebrating in collaboration of COBLO's diversity, equity, and inclusion at the PTS teams and we're performing re-laws during the SEA block for each of the class in the building. Additionally, the Juneteenth celebration and the variety show means a lot to BSU because it shows what BSU is really about. BSU is about being proud to be in Black and not being afraid to, not being afraid to be your true self nor a high society receives you. Our yearly Juneteenth variety show celebration is empowering for BSU. BSU students in particular allowing us to connect with our roots and enjoying the relationship we made with each other and each other in BSU. This also gives our classmates and teachers at Penfield High School a chance to understand and learn Black culture as well as a positive reputation, yeah, positive representation at the school.
Now, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the importance of representation. As we know, there is little to no representation of any diverse staff in any of our schools. And although there have been some amazing individuals who have recently joined the staff across our district, we will continue to ask for a strong dedication to diversifying our staff members. For example, our club would not be possible without the efforts of one specific individual, Ms. McCleary. She's one of the most dedicated and passionate people in the entire world and she supports us in so many ways. From providing valuable advice, emotional support, and most importantly, her valuable time, she's the major reason that our club is able to operate. And next, what do we need from our Penfield community? Number one, we need the board to continue to support our work. We deeply appreciate knowing that there is a group of community leaders who are here to support us in all of our endeavors and we're so grateful for your time. Number two, please stay dedicated to making Penfield a welcoming and affirming environment for all students. And number three, we ask you to continue to seek out diverse staff for all schools in the district. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Go ahead.
I've got questions. Well, thank you for coming out. I'm just curious, how often do you meet and then what do you, what do you do during your meetings? I mean, what kinds of things do you talk about or try to forward?
We usually just plan for upcoming events, like this past couple of weeks, we're planning of how we were, what we're gonna do for Black History Month specifically. And I assume that probably after Black History Month, we'll probably be planning for events like Juneteenth or any other, or any other issues that come across regarding racial issues at our school.
And we meet every Friday after school.
Oh, great. Great. Thank you.
Kristin?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I love that you're collaborating with our youngest students. I don't know if you guys remember when you were in elementary school and how big you thought the high schooler kids were. It was a long time ago when I was there, but I remember when I got to high school thinking, I'm really not that big, but I just think that's awesome that you're collaborating with our youngest kiddos here, because you are their role models and you're who they look up to, so I think that's great.
Any other comments?
I just have one question. Do you think you'll be collaborating with other elementary schools or maybe, is there a BSU at the middle school yet?
Currently, I don't believe there's a BSU at the middle school just because of lack of Black staff in general to lead a group like that.
Okay.
But we would love to work with more elementary and lower-level academic groups, just because that's a great way to connect with our community and, you know, sort of spread the love.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add that at Bay Trail, we're having an interest meeting for a Black Student Union next Wednesday.
Okay.
So there may be the formation of a Black Student Union there. We're just looking for students that may have an interest in forming a club, so.
Okay. Thank you.
It's on the horizons.
Good to know. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you guys so much for coming and giving your perspective and your experiences and how valuable that is to you. It really means a lot and you guys did a great job. You're welcome. And it is nerve-wracking to be in front of everyone. I am testament of that right now. So, thank you so much for coming.
I actually think I just wanna say thank you because I know that, that any sort of skip you had or struggle was really just to show Ms. Belster that it's okay to lead the meeting. So that was really amazing. Just on behalf, I know the work that you do, you're a relatively newer club. We have, last I knew, like 63 clubs at the high school and although it wasn't noted, is this club really came from students, just like our other clubs. It comes from students who come forward to say, we have a need, we have an interest, and, and so, thank you for that, whether you were involved in it, if you're an upperclassman when it started, or folks that came before you. But I think it's so important for all students to know that when we have a need and there's a desire for a club, the district will work to try to make that happen. And thank you for all that you do in terms of being role models for our younger students across, and thank you for the shout-out to your advisor, because I think Ms. McCleary has done some incredible things in her role as a K-12 social worker and I know speaks very highly of the work that the students do. And so, thank you very much for coming out, I really appreciate it, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting. But as students, we will totally understand if you, if you head out, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Yeah.
Before we continue, would anyone object if we turn that off?
I would not. Is that okay?
Are you guys okay with that?
That was an opportunity to object to you, Mark, but I, it also was bothering me, so thank you for doing that. So, not to make it like a really hard act to follow, but if we could have Mary Sipone come up as our, many hats, but as a TOSA for preschool CSC, but also really our go-to for universal pre-K, which believe it or not, is just within its first year. Doesn't it feel like we've been doing this forever?
It does, it does. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. So like Dr. Putnam said, my name is Mary Sipone. I am the UPK liaison and the Committee on Preschool Special Education Chairperson here in Penfield. We wanted to recap a little bit tonight about this current school year's UPK program as well as talk a little bit about next school years as well. Let me just see here. Here we go. So just as a recap, the state provides an allocation to Penfield and for Penfield, it's 116 students that were allotted from the state to have participate in our universal pre-K program. So back in, back last year, when we were, we had our open enrollment, we had a lottery system, but we had about 180, 179 students apply for 116 spots. So through the lottery process, this was, this was the most amazing thing, so I might talk really fast because it was, I couldn't have guessed that it would have gone this way. Through our lottery process, all 179 students were offered a placement at least once, if not given multiple opportunities. So the reason why this happened is we had some families that were really, really wanted their first or second choice on their list and we were working with four different sites. And so what ended up happening is if their child, when we called to let them know that their child had gotten into universal pre-K, it maybe wasn't their first or second choice, it might have been their third or fourth, thus resulting in them either asking us to be put back on the waitlist, at the bottom of the waitlist, or to withdraw from UPK altogether. Some of the reasons might have been proximity to their home, driving to work in the morning and dropping off the students or their children to UPK, but what that did was free open other spots on the list for waitlist students to participate in UPK. So it really was quite amazing that we actually made it through our waitlist and offered families a spot, even though it may, may not have been their first or second choice. So that was really interesting because I did not, I couldn't have guessed that we would have made it through our waitlist. So families were given, like I said, an opportunity to accept their placement, go to the bottom of the waitlist, or withdraw completely from UPK. Also, as a recap, we had four different locations this year. We had Brown Croft Daycare, where we had one classroom of 18 students, Children's Continuous Care in Macedon, where we had 26 students in two classrooms, Fairport Care-A-Lot, one classroom and 18 students, and Bayview YMCA, where we had 54 students in three classrooms. Also this year, as I go through just a couple of pictures of our classrooms and students, we had a great superintendent's conference day where we had arranged to have a BOCES presenter participate and provide professional development on English language learners to our UPK teachers, aides, and director's staff as well. And we really look forward to collaborating and have begun the process of scheduling and collaborating with elementary school principals and kindergarten teachers so that they can have information on students that they maybe wouldn't have normally had if they weren't part of the Penfield community and the UPK program. So as we move on to next school year, the state allocation has not changed, so we still are looking at 116 students for our universal pre-K. Our Penfield UPK partnerships will continue at the Brown Croft Daycare, at Children's Continuous Care in Macedon, and at Care-A-Lot in Fairport. Bayview YMCA has made the decision to not partner with us for next school year, so we have opened up our request for proposals process to determine additional locations. So for those of you here in the community and at home that don't know what an RFP or Request for Proposals process is, it's basically an application process where interested parties can essentially fill out an application or a request for proposal to participate, or to be in the running to partner with Penfield for next school year's classrooms that we are looking for. And so what will happen is on December, I'm sorry, on February 24th, the Request for Proposals will close. Between February 25th and March 6th, we will review the Request for Proposals from people in the community like local childcares or other preschools. We'll make a recommendation to the board about approval for the UPK partnerships on March 7th. And then on March 8th, Dr. Maloney and I will be hosting a Penfield UPK virtual presentation for families, which is very similar to what we did last year as well, to provide information to the family about the sites that we'll be working with, the options that they have to participate, information about the application process and the lottery process as well. On March 13th, our enrollment application will be posted on the website and we will open our open enrollment period, and that's when families will submit their application to be chosen or selected in the lottery process that will occur in mid-April. I am hoping that by May 5th, families will be notified of being selected or being put on a waitlist for universal pre-K and then we can begin the registration process at the specific sites and through Penfield. For more information, families are encouraged to go to our website. A universal pre-K link is on the left side of the district webpage and it's also under, on the red ribbon on the main website. I've told families many times, under the scroll of schools and it's the last one down. And then also for specific questions, families and board members and community members are encouraged just to contact me, Mary Sipone, and my email and phone number are there as well. Is there any questions that I can answer for the board at all about where we've come this year, where we're going next year?
Board members, questions?
I have one. Can you remind me, last year, because I know with Bayview dropping out, we're hoping that we have another community-based organization. Were there additional requests for, that we weren't able to?
So that's a great question. So last year, there, last year there weren't.
Okay.
So, but this year, we have some new prospects that we've, that we've identified, so we have, I think we've sent out anywhere between eight and 10 requests for proposals to area childcares and preschools to fill out and then to be in the, in the running for, to be chosen and selected to be one of our sites.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Now, these partners need to be certified by the state, they need some kind of state credential, incorrect?
Yeah, so typically, in order to run a universal pre-K that is a full day, the location has to be licensed through OCFS, the Office of Child and Family Services. Most CBOs or community-based organizations are already inherently licensed through OCFS because they are childcare centers and they have full-day programming for students. So the only, the only places that would require to be OCFS-approved is places that are not yet providing full day or over, actually over three hours programming per day, or places that aren't a childcare, like some of our half-day preschools that we have located in the community, or some, even some special, preschool special education agencies as well. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Because when you mentioned putting out those RFPs, I didn't know if they needed to be, have that credential, if that would take time, that would preclude them from responding to the RFP, but if it sounds like they already are.
Most of them are, yes. Most of them are childcare centers, there are a couple that aren't, but I think that if they were interested in partnering with us, I think we would, we would talk about what that process of becoming licensed through OCFS would look like and how long that would take and things that they would have to do.
Okay, thanks. And then I have one other thing, which really is directed this way. When we went from half-day to full-day K, the response from the teachers at the elementary school was the, that the students were much better prepared, there was definitely a noticeable advancement in the preparation and the capabilities of the students coming into first grade. So I, you know, look forward to, now this is the first year, so maybe next year, I look forward to hearing about how the pre-K kids do when they come into kindergarten.
And so I think, you know, part of that is that even families who are not in the district UPK program, there are many full-day preschool programs, private, that students go through. Typically, teachers do tend to see some positives of students who've been in a preschool-type program, whether it be UPK or even a private place, and it's really just around sort of following directions and understanding, working with other students, and understanding sharing, and understanding sort of the routines. But again, our kindergarten teachers take them all and make sure that they support them, get them ready. But I do think, Mark, that it is a great piece for the district to keep an eye on and look at, because we can monitor sort of how is it working? Do we see one, one area preschool maybe, you know, seeing students come out of there maybe more prepared? And so those are the pieces that over time, we'd be able to have some data, data trends to take a look at, so I think 100%.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for all that you're doing. It seems like it's very well thought out and I can't imagine it any other way. Right? Is there a way, and I know this is extremely still new, but has there been feedback from parents or even from kiddos, like, how is it going? Are they enjoying it? Are they coming home completely exhausted?
No. Well, so I have only received positive feedback or seen positive feedback on social media, frankly, that sometimes that's where I look, to see if there's positive feedback there. Families have told me, and frankly, families are really excited for next year. I've been getting, I get about 10 emails or phone calls a day about registering, when is the registration process going to open, when can we apply, we don't want to miss it, you know, things like that. So I think that in the Penfield community, families talk to each other and they have had a really positive experience and have even shared with, you know, what particular things their, their child is working on. I think the kids are also really excited. I think they're really proud of themselves, especially, especially with some of the pre-reading skills that they've been learning, and showing, showcasing that, showcasing how many words they can figure out that they, that rhyme together. And they're so, they're so proud that they can do it and it's quite amazing to watch. So, so to answer your question, I think it's been overwhelmingly a positive experience. I would hope that if there was any negative experiences out there, I would be the first to know, or it'd be passed down to me for sure, so that I could fix it or rectify it right away. Next year, I think, I think we're going to be looking a lot at the, at the same success that it's had and really above and, above and beyond, I really just want the students to have the pre-learning skills to be able to jump into kindergarten and be able to follow the routine, be able to know how to hang up their backpack, know how to hang up their coat, and be able to kind of jump in academically as well. So that, those are really my primary.
And there's a big social-emotional piece here.
There is, yeah. We do second step in our UPK classrooms as well and just by inherently by being part of universal pre-K, it's a lot about learning how to form friendships, sustain friendships, work through any peer conflicts that can, you know, occur for little four-year-olds and things of that nature as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I actually have one more, but mine's more directed this way as well. Are we still advertising other than just, I know last year, let me phrase this correctly, last year my question was around, are we making sure that all families know about this within our community, because there could be people that don't necessarily have Penfield kiddos yet? How are we advertising that?
I know that we've-
Was that clear?
Yes, you are. Yeah. So we, we have advertised on our, on our Facebook page and on Twitter and just on the Penfield website. When families call me, just inherently by calling me, I make sure that they register not only their four-year-olds that might be eligible, or their three-going-on-four-year-old that might be eligible next year, but any babies that are in the household as well, because by, by registering even their, their youngest children through our census, our school census, which was concerning for me too, we were able to kind of, those kids will kind of work through our system and then we'll be able to provide applications to that family because they provided us their contact information way back when they had a one-year-old or, you know, a three-year-old as well. So when parents call me, like they are right now, I'm really encouraging them, you know, go fill out the census, call our registrar, and make sure that- you know, go fill out the census, call our registrar and make sure that even, you know, if you have a new, newborn in the house, that you register them, even though they're a newborn.
Thank you. And actually, last year, some of our most successful advertising was a huge thank you to George English and his team. We had, we replaced the sign at District Office around advertising for bus drivers and right there at the corner of, of Qualtrough and-
Sorry, Mike. Apologize for that.
It was only for, for the, the registration time. And then we also had signs at each of our buildings and they were strategically placed, for example, the one here was by the pool entrance because that's where families who are coming in through any of the Penfield recreation activities, that's where they're entering. So really, and Mary, and in collaboration with our district registrar, Mary Hill, they have done an amazing job. Anytime a family enters the district, contacts the district, really being sure to register or make note of all of the kiddos in the house so that we have better data and then we can begin to reach out. And I just, while I have the microphone, I just want to say, Mary is absolutely amazing at what she does. She makes weekly visits. She knows, she has relationships with the teachers, the directors at the CBOs, the families, the students. When we walk into a classroom, she knows the students, she knows their names. I could not ask for a better liaison. She is absolutely amazing. And families, if you're out there watching and you have a question, please call Mary, 249-5733. She is, she is happy to answer any question. Watch our website. We'll be updating with all the information. Look for our signs. We're very excited about the program. Families will reach out to Mary and if there is some type of problem, then she will, will solve it. And in terms of the curriculum, it's a very seamless connection. We talked, she mentioned Second Step, Haggerty, which is a science of reading-based program they're using, which connects right into what we use, Super Kids, which we use at the primary level. So it's really, you've done an amazing job.
Thanks, thanks.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do, you know how the allotment was determined? Like I remember, so there are 179 that applicants, but then only 116. So would, I think I asked this last year, would there be a chance to, for it to increase? Or how was the allotment even determined?
So the state, the state has a, I remember last year, sitting here and talking about it as well, they have this magical formula that, well, I'll never know. And maybe we'll never know how they come up with 116. I don't know. I've, I've talked with the state about it, but I don't think that there's, there's any, at least for next year, there's probably, there's not going to be a change to the 116 because they have their own formula that they, that they use for each district. So each district has a different allotment.
Okay.
I'm assuming it has to do with the pop, the size of the population in some way.
Okay.
Oh, I'll actually be talking about this in a little bit. The, the standard allotment is going to stay the same for 116. The governor did propose an expansion of UPK for next year with some caveats, so I'll touch on those a little later. But basically, it's still the same amount per pupil. It still wouldn't include like transportation costs, things like that. So while it may be possible, we still have to explore exactly what that looks like and also finding the providers to, to seat those extra kids too. So, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me, everybody. Have a nice night.
Just real quick, Mary, I just, I just want to second what Dr. Maloney said in terms of the work. And, and I think that you make this look easy. For the board and for the community at large, the amount of proactive phone calls you make in terms of, when you talk about the question about like, do you think we'll have other people interested? I know you're making proactive phone calls to let people know about the RFP process and, and putting word out. You really have dedicated a, a lot of time and have learned so much. But also, Mary came to the district even prior to UPK, starting with like a draft plan for this. So this is something really in your wheelhouse. And, and I think for the community too, is, is, it's an option. So that's the other piece, is, is not all families are interested in UPK. Every family is different. The dynamics are different. Childcare is different. And so ultimately, it just is an option. And I have heard nothing but positives from community members because the option works for them. And, and that process of the lottery really is amazing. It, there's rules from the state on how that has to work and it really is, is a lottery. It, that's, that's, like, there is no playing. There's no, you know, preference given to like the superintendent, you know. So we're in a private system because it didn't work out for us. But I just, I, it's part of that piece that, that I'm always proud of Penfield. Of course, we have to follow that, but the reality is, it's, it's a fair process. It really is a lottery. And I was amazed to know that at least one family who moved into the district after the lot, lottery was actually offered a spot. Because it wasn't just a lottery, here's the spots and then we're done. It's really Mary's work to continue to offer when things open up and just, it's really kudos. And again, it's, it's a great option for some families. And thank you for all the hard work that you put in. Because I really do think this presentation, and from the outside, it looks seamless, but I know how much time and work you put into this and, and it's seen. And thank you.
Well, thank you. My pleasure.
Absolutely.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to bring up now Mike Gala, our Director of Transportation. I'm sorry that we put a preschool sign application up when we're looking to try to hire drivers, but you were very supportive. And the clicker's there, Mike, and we appreciate you being here to provide our annual full update for Transportation Department.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. And I have not too many slides to go through, but I'll give you a little update on staff, our, our buses. And there's, there's something a little bit different I want to talk about in the, in the end of this that I'm not sure has ever come up before, but I want to give you a little taste of what we're doing that I don't think a lot of people know about. Not that it's bad, it's good. All right. So let's start with the staff. My staff right now, I have five office staff members, excuse me, the dispatch, router, office clerk, safety coordinator and trainer, and the, myself, the director. And right, right at the, right off the top, I want to tell you, this is an excellent, unbelievable group of people who have gone out of their way to help me keep this running the way it's been running with the shortages that we've had. These folks have stepped up and gone well beyond the call of duty here. So I just wanted to point that out. We currently have 65 drivers, 16 attendants. Three of the attendants are training to become drivers. We have now five mechanics, one of which is our new parts room stock inventory keeper. We're going to have a different way of keeping inventory based on the audit we had. And we have somebody responsible for it. We're going to secure it and, and we'll be, just going to be run more like a, a shop, right? So one of those mechanics, part-time, will be doing that inventory part. We have currently three drivers in training and, and we had more, but they went elsewhere. To say that this has been a challenge in a year would be an understatement, but we've managed to keep it up. We've lost several drivers along the way. We've had some additional requests this year that we haven't had in the past. Our operation consists of currently 57 large buses, 16 mini buses, and two mini, mini wheelchair buses. We have a third wheelchair bus that we're not paying for. It's just kind of loaned to us in the event one of our wheelchair buses breaks down until ours come in from Bozey's. They have some spare sitting out there and we just got to use it if we need to use it. We currently have 280 runs in district, 33 out of district, and 42 schools served. This next line, contracted routes. Last year, we contracted out with a private contractor at the tune of $225,000 for about eight students, I think we had going. This year, we have zero runs and zero students or four, zero schools, with the exception of Bozey's, which is down to 13 schools currently serving 47 students for us. So that's, that's something I want to, in some later slides here, I'm going to talk about in more detail. Our driver training, we have added five new drivers and five attendants since September, and we've lost six between retirements, illness, and just quitting. So we're down one from where we started when we started first of the year. I'm the doom and gloom, but I got some good news in the end here. Two drivers are start, have starting dates to, to be determined, but we know that's going to be just before April. So we're going to have two of them there. And we have one trainee just about ready to go. We're hoping to get her in at the very end of this month. Her at first thing in March. After that, we still have three trainees left with road tests, probably not going to be until May. Some type around there. So, so we have people coming in. I'm not chang-, oh, you're changing it. Thank you. So last year, we talked about this a little bit and I'm, I'm sure you remember, but we'll talk real briefly about it again. Entry-level driver training. The Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration came up with a new set of entry-level training for new drivers. We had to, by February of last year, today actually, come up with a certified trainer and a program to create, a program to meet this new requirement. As of last year, we did do that. We have that training in effect. The certification was done for both Bob Singer, Robert Singer, and myself. We're both certified. EDLT is a minimum set of requirements that FMCSA, just all those acronyms, will release a document to New York State so that we can actually do the test. It's the only way we're going to be able to get road tests done. And it doesn't matter whether you're doing it in New York State or if you're doing it in Pennsylvania or Florida. It all goes through the Fed now and then, then comes to the state. So the, the transportation, our Transportation Department has been working for, on this for several years. We have a curriculum set and we've used it for seven drivers so far. It's worked fine. Bob Singer and myself are actually certified with the federal portion of this now too. And Penfield, and this is important, Central Schools is set up as a training facility because of Bob and myself at this point. And that's different because if you heard some advertisements or some news, things about people going to a district to be trained, but they're going online to get this EDL portion of it, we're actually a facility that can train it without going online. That makes it a whole lot easier because it's, it's not quite as sitting at the computer and, and listening to something for 12 hours or eight hours, whatever it's going to be, and then getting logged off and starting over again and how that all works. So we can make it a little more exciting. So we're a little different than most. And as far as I know at this point, we're the only facility in this area in Monroe County right now certified with the federal government. Okay. Another part of the government, DOT, Department of Transportation. Last year, we talked about some buses that were pulled out of service because of the floors that were rotting. I showed you some terrible pictures. I'm going to show them to you again, but it's good. The buses were repaired. They were repaired by us and we saved approximately $40,000 doing it ourselves, rather than sending it out to a repair shop. Our buses are DOT inspected every six months and at that point last year, our rating was at 98% because of the buses that were pulled out of service. I'm happy to announce that as of February 2nd this year, we are back to 100% and all of our buses are meeting DOT standards. And the next slide, oh, sorry, you're doing that. Go ahead. Is our report card. And that's it. So I'm, I'm pretty happy we got back there because-
And a 0% score is good.
That means there's no defects. And in the small print on the bottom, I couldn't get a better copy of this. It says 100% down at the bottom.
Perfect.
All right. Bus durability. We're looking at ways to hold on to the buses longer. Obviously, the diesel engines and, and the electric engines coming into play will last much longer. In our climate, our problem is the frame. The frames are failing, the floors are failing due to the rust and the salt that we all deal with with our cars, right? So we're investigating costs versus longevity with undercoating service that we started this year. I have a couple of photos I'm going to show you. These were the bottoms of those buses last year that were failed. And then now we're, we've undercoated them and you'll see that picture and you'll see what the difference is going to be between them. So that was one of the buses last year that failed, obviously. That was the fix for it. So the metal rail there supports all the other beams that are going across and DOT accepted that as a fix. And that was what we welded in and made the structure change there and in various other places. So with this company that we've hired to undercoat these buses for us, we have a, a picture like this now. So what they did is they came and sandblasted the buses, 333, which I believe is 2000, I should have had this, 2014, 15, 2015, 16 timeframe. And they're guaranteeing us, as long as we use their process, which we've set up, that we will have 100% for 10 years, no rust on them, including the buses that we already owned that they went in. So that we've done all of the fleet so far that we have, with the exceptions of the ones that are going to be gone in the next few years that they wouldn't guarantee. So, so we're going to look and see. When you break it down to bus, it's $200 a bus, $217.42. So that may, in my mind, be well worth the investment. That may allow us to keep these buses running just a little bit longer and overall saving. All right. Bus durability. Our intent is to get more usable years in mileage out of the fleet. And here's something that's a little different for us this year. We've increased our mileage by a little over $23,000, or dollars, miles this year at the same time last year, from the same time last year. That's a considerable increase in mileage we're doing on, on the same buses. We have fewer drivers, we have more students, and we have more mileage to cover right now. The next few visuals that I'm going to put up are going to show what we're doing, traveling this year to meet the demand that has come to us that has been a little more difficult to meet. So there's various maps I'm going to show you. This one is just the map of Penfield Central School. The darker green is, is our, our area. What it's going to show you is that the outliers that we're also going to, and I don't know that you can see that any better than me, but on the east side, outside of our district, we're going to Farmington at 20 miles each way. And we're going to Victor, 12 miles each way. Wayne Central Schools, 14 miles each way. On the west side of the city, we're going to Lehigh Station Road, Name Street, which is practically Scottsville, Norman Howard. These are 16, 17, 12-mile runs one way. So that's a lot of the extra miles that we're actually doing. So when you look at that map right there and where, where we are, all of that is considered based on Route 250, which we consider is the center of the town from a mileage standpoint. So that's how we came up with those mileages for those runs. We go out to Spencerport at 21 miles each way. The next map, this is, going to show you some of the outliers, but what I really want to show you here is that last year, we talked about getting the new radios installed and having GPS and all that nice new technology on the bus, which we did. The radios are phenomenal. We're no longer anal, analog. We're, we're doing great with them. This screen goes up on a big screen TV. It looks a whole lot better than it does here. All the little green dots are buses and they're all numbered. And it's telling me with an arrow which way it's going, east, west, north, south. That tells me, you know, that, that grouping is, again, in our Penfield area, the group of them. The reds on that particular day and this snapshot at that time are the outliers of the buses that are out to those various places. It also tells me how fast that bus is going and the route it took to get where it went. So when it stops at somebody's house and they call up and say the bus- So when it stops at somebody's house, and they call up and say the bus never showed up, or didn't, I can easily say it did, and this is the time it was there. Or I could say, no, you didn't miss the bus, it's on its way, it's two streets away from you. So this has been wonderful. It helps me figure out where the buses are, the timing behind it, when the weather's bad, we can see where they're all piled up on 441. So it's been really good. So I just wanted to point that out. That was something we did last year. And then Penfield out of District Transportation. This is a big difference from anything we've done in the past, all right? So remember I said we have no outside contractors, right? We're doing it all in-house. This is what we're really doing. So again, the blue line, that's Penfield. All the outliers. The yellow are students that live outside of the district that we go to, and the red squares are the schools that we go to outside of the district. Plus, all those little green ones are in that blue line would be where they were. So that gives you kind of a visual of really where our buses are. But this is even better. Thirty-three students, sixteen schools, fifteen drivers, and fifteen buses, seven-hundred-and-forty miles a day. That's why we're struggling a little bit. It's one driver, one student, one bus. And it's not overly easy to find contract people right now, by the way, because they're having just as much trouble finding drivers. And the ones that are available, I really have some reservations about. So I am working with a company right now. We're working on getting some workers' comp papers in place that will be adequate for the school, so we can maybe start to use them a little bit, take care of some of these. And then that was it on the mileage part of it. So our bus replacement now, we have two electric buses on hold for us. We had the opportunity to have these buses this fall for a few weeks, so drivers could drive them, the staff drove them, I drove them. We have them sitting, waiting for a favorable vote in May, and if that happens, we have the buses are ready to be delivered. We're in the process right now of looking at how we're going to set up charging, and it appears at the moment that we're going to be able to do it in-house. We're not going to have to hire this out to be done. We have the power for these two buses at the garage. It's just a matter of where we're going to put the buses, as to how far out we're going to have to dig up the driveway to do it. The charging system is ready for us to purchase. The only thing we're waiting on right now is the contracting to see what it's going to take to put the power just to the pedestal out there for it. We're also looking to replace five large diesel buses and two mini buses. We're going to go with a different brand this year. They're going to be Bluebirds. And the reason I'm considering or making this change, besides the fact that I personally think they're a better-built bus, from a rusting standpoint, Bluebird uses a lot more stainless, whereas Thomas doesn't. There's, for instance, there's stairwell, there's stepwell, where we break down constantly, where all the snow is in the salt. After five years, six years, we're repairing that. A Bluebird bus that's all stainless steel, it is not going to rot. So we're hoping, between the rust-proofing, the different buses, the more stainless steel, the screws are stainless steel, so you're not getting the rust draining down the outside of the bus, we're hoping that all these things are all positives for us. And that's it.
Board members' questions?
Hi, thank you so much. So why are we going to schools outside of district? I'm a newbie, maybe everybody else knows that, but...
So we have to go to transport students to the school that has the program that's going to best suit their needs, in some case. There's a variety of reasons why we do it, all driven by state law, obviously, by state law.
Correct me, but it would be students with disabilities who have been placed through the CSE process for a district outside of Penfield, but then also privately placed, so families that may be sending their child to a private school outside of Penfield. We have to transport...
Fifteen.
Fifteen miles.
Yep.
Up to fifteen miles for charter schools, private schools. And then on the other side is students with disabilities who CSE places outside of the district, home district.
But that's, so, and all of those families are within Penfield School District, like, you have to live here to get transported there?
Yeah, so you have to live in Penfield to get Penfield transportation.
Yeah.
And then if you lived in another district, your district would be transporting to that same private school.
Okay.
The other piece, which isn't your question, but I'm going to jump on it if it's okay, is you talked about students who don't live in the district that we are required by law to transport.
Correct.
And it's really, it probably falls into McKinney-Vento, so students who are deemed homeless, per state law, is where that is. I just, for the public, want to make clear that we sometimes talk about our incredible urban suburban program, but all of those transportations are through the Rochester City School District.
Correct.
And so really, when we look at students who are not residing within Penfield, the vast majority are students who were, and then become homeless, and there's a McKinney-Vento law that requires all schools to then transport up to a certain amount of miles based on that process.
So those are the yellow dots on that map that had red squares and yellow dots?
Those were students, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yellow dots being the students.
The students, the Reds were the schools, I believe.
And then the Reds. And for McKinney-Vento, a student who is deemed homeless, and then the district, one because it's law, but two because it's the right thing to do, is to support them, those students, for the vast majority, are being transported into Penfield to attend school. You know, we have a family that has a devastating house fire, and they obviously can't be in their home while it's being repaired, you know, that might be an example. There's lots of examples on why families would unfortunately go through a trauma of homelessness.
Any other questions? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Gallow. You and I have had many conversations on a morning, when I call you and ask you, please don't stop for my child.
Those are good calls.
Yeah, so, thank you so much. I have a question.
Sure.
What is the golden number for the amount of drivers for our school district? What is the golden number?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Right now, I'd say we could use, and I'll tell you why, minimally ten more, okay? Because I have, currently, I have three runs that there are no assigned drivers to. So we're using a mechanic, myself, one of the office people, to drive it. If I had ten, we'd first cover those three, but the next thing that we would do is we'd back some of these kids off of the elementary runs, because we have those buses too full. There's way too many kids on the bus, we're having all kinds of issues with behaviors, but we just can't, you know, if we could throw a couple extra buses in there and take some of those kids off, and get it down to fifty kids on a bus, or forty-five kids ideally, it would make it a whole lot easier. So that's why I say we need it. We've condensed and condensed, and there's just no more squeezing.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know you mentioned that we would potentially purchase with our electric buses if it passes this May in the budget vote, that we would have a charging station. Is that charging station something that we would be able to reuse in our new bus garage?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
So the infrastructure to bring the power to the station, no, but the station itself could be removed, yes.
And thank you for everything you're doing, because you're definitely thinking outside the box, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. You know, it was interesting hearing about the, looking at Bluebird buses, and I understand why. Now, what's the impact on that in terms of maintenance, in terms of parks commonality, training on the different models?
Good question. The Bluebird runs the same Cummings diesel engine. It uses all the same filters, parts, tires, all that stuff is all the same. The differences are going to be in the, you know, in some of the body, all right? So the shield that goes over the yellows and the Reds that keep the snow from building against it, you know, that's going to be a little different. But that's something that they keep stocked, so it's not something we would stock a bunch of, so it's readily available. But for the most part, they're really, you know, from a mechanical standpoint, there isn't going to be any difference.
And the other thing goes back to testing, which, you know, the training is, of course, it's great that, now, we have that capability in-house. You know, part of the testing for the license was, it was designed not for bus drivers in mind, it was designed for commercial truck drivers. Drivers had to do a lot of extra things that we wouldn't ask them to do.
Correct.
To pass a test. There was a waiver for that, that was like a ninety-day waiver that was extended, and I think is now going to be a two-year waiver. Have you seen any impact or benefit of that when you went to take your candidates for testing?
No, because we trained them for the Class B license.
Okay.
And with the understanding that there's an easier way, but it's not that much easier. And if, in the summer, you want to drive a dump truck, or do something different while you're not driving a school bus, you're not going to be able to do that if you don't do it this way. The training for going under the bus, or the backing, the alley backing, or the offset parking that we do in the back of the high school there, that, it's not really a difficult thing, especially with the way we've set it up. We've made videos, we have some really nice video of Bob Singer, the training coordinator, safety coordinator, doing the actual video. We have a gentleman, Craig, he's a driver who is a professional videoer, and he's just made this awesome presentation for new drivers to sit and look at, and then we go out and we touch things. So, you know, when the weather's great, it's an easy ordeal. When the weather's not so good, then we do something else. But we've had good luck with it. So I'm, it's my opinion that I don't want to get away from doing it the way it's going to go back to.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Just, it was interesting, and I can't recall, so help, the undercoating, that sort of service we're using, is that a one-time?
Nope.
Or is it every year they come back and do the undercoating?
They come in once a year, and they check for any rust that's starting, anything that's happening, they deal with it, and then they respray it.
I bought a lot of cars in my life, and I always say no to the undercoating, because I was always told it was, you know, like, just try to get more money. So I'm glad that it actually works for our buses.
Yeah, we have some people using that particular process, which is very messy. And I can tell you firsthand, because I was the first one who went under the bus and said, oh, look at this, and it came all off on my hands.
Yeah.
Because it stays soft. It doesn't, it never hardens. So what happens is, as the salt and the water and everything hits it, it's actually breaking down.
Yeah.
And then you're getting closer to the metal again, and that's why they respray it a second time, but they can constantly pay attention to what's happening to the metal.
I think it's just, the comment piece is, you know, it's kudos, Mike, for what you've brought to the department and the work you do. I think taking a look at, although hard to see on the screen, that live feed you can see in the Transportation Center about where all the buses are, looking at routes, you, through everything you've done, have really been sort of like a troubleshooter and a proactive thinker. And I think people, you know, as a parent, you forget about how many bus runs we're doing, how many students are on those buses. It really is, and then you never know when three buses are out, three drivers are out, right? Because of illness that comes up, or family, it happens.
Right.
And so it really is incredible work that you do. And I know it's frustrating for our community, our students and parents sometimes, when an after-school bus run at the last minute has to get canceled, or we're struggling to work through, but like, it's because of all of the pieces that you've got to try to put in. And so I just, just thank you very much for that, and I would like to get that map at my house, because I have to, so I can yell at my kids to get to the bus on time. So it's really nice to know where the bus is.
We could use it for that.
So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And that concludes special reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, student report.
Good evening. So just beginning, so this week is our National School Counseling Week, with many students at PHS wearing shorts tomorrow in support for mental health support. And then at PHS, National Honor Society is currently running two separate drives, one of them being a food drive to benefit the Bethany House, which is a private homeless shelter that supports women and children, and a youth coat drive to benefit the Salvation Army. And both these drives will run until February seventeenth. The boys varsity swim team has their sectionals tonight at Webster. Over the weekend, the science Olympiad team competed at regionals and placed third overall, meaning that they will move on to compete at states at LeMoyne College in the spring. The indoor track team relay recently qualified for nationals, so they will be going to nationals in Boston in March. And varsity cheer placed first at their Spartan showdown. Penfield wrestlers participated in New York's first girls wrestling state invitational. The PHS Environmental Club attended the Penfield Town Board meeting to ask the town to take the Climate Smart Communities pledge. And lastly, upcoming this Thursday, is the PHS Prism Concert. At Bay Trail, tonight, students are playing in the Jazz on the Trail concert. At Scribner, kindergartners really had a lot of fun building snowmen and playing outside in the snow during recess. At Harris Hill, meteorologist James Gilbert taught students about how weather and forecasting works. At Cobles, in music class, fourth graders have been practicing their recorder skills and have won their recorder karate black belts. And then lastly, Indian Landing, Suzuki students had their beginners concert at PHS last week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Lila. Okay, superintendents' reports?
Sure, so we have, thank you. Yep, so we've got a few reports this evening, the Student and Staff Honors, I'll touch upon some that we've already heard about. I have a few updates, and then we'll talk about the 2023-24 school calendar that's up for the board to approve. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates as we continue to go through our budget season. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Maloney to talk a bit about the Professional Learning Plan and look for approval from the board to add some pieces. So Black Scholars, just a congratulations to our high school students who are recently honored by the Urban League's Black Scholars Recognition Program. Kudos to academic achievements and the support for those scholarships. Portfolio exhibit, you might remember, we may have had a day where we canceled after-school activities. That was an event for, really to highlight the art students' portfolios, and so these exhibits are all up, and they remain up here at the high school through February seventeenth. Just an opportunity, if you are at an event here in Penfield, whether it be an athletic event, or a meeting after school, or a board meeting, if you walk down and take a look in the art wing, in the main hallway, this slide sort of outlines all the areas. And these are seniors doing their portfolio presentations. Again, just every time I see it, as an individual with very little to no art talent, and just amazed at what they're able to create, thanks to their hard work, determination, and some incredible art teachers really helping to build their creativity. A girls wrestling, as was mentioned, is just huge, and so congratulations to LeBode, Penfield Wrestling, congratulations, who placed fifth at a hundred and thirty-eight pounds for the first-ever New York State High School Girls Wrestling Tournament that was held in Syracuse over the weekend. You know, it's really, it's interesting, because this is an area, so we have had, in Penfield, like many districts, female students wrestling, but there hasn't ever been a Section Five or state support of girls wrestling. So they wrestle on the boys team, and then they have opportunities sometimes for some all-girl tournaments, and really, as we build this capacity for truly a girls wrestling team. And I look at it as, one is, these are kids who have been really passionate about the sport. I hear a lot from their parents and pushing for girls wrestling here in Penfield. It's also incredible opportunity. And when we look at a lot of the work we do around equity, here's an opportunity to take a look at, here's an opportunity to look at, you know, wrestling is typically boys, girls can wrestle, but having girls be able to wrestle other girls really brings it to another level. And so kudos to Mary Beth Walker, Athletic Director, who is continuing to look at ways to bring equity into the world of our athletics. One that's not on here, but the board did approve in the consent agenda, is really looking at flag football. Flag football is a girl sport that has been approved by New York State and Section Five, and so it's a spring sport, bringing an opportunity for more students to participate in football. Right now, it is deemed a girl sport underneath New York State and Section Five. Ideally, I think there's an interesting piece for down the road of flag football being for both boys and girls, for lots of reasons in terms of concussions and concerns, and so I think it's pretty exciting. But again, when we look at this, it's not something we point out, but it really is in terms of looking at equity through all that we do to support our female athletes. to support our female athletes as much as our boy athletes and trying to really support all. So again, just kudos to all, I think that's absolutely awesome. And as mentioned, this is National School Counseling Week all week. So just a thank you to our school counselors for helping students achieve social, emotional well-being, academic success. And we have counselors from our K-5 buildings, our middle school and our high school, all really bringing a lot of similarities to the work that they do, but also real specific grade level. So as you get into the high school, you start talking about the scheduling process, but also that college search or post-high school search and what to do. And just really a lot of work that, that goes in. I saw a counselor today who was wearing a shirt that said Guidance Counselor and then guidance was crossed off and it said School Counselor. And I think it's really important, we, we always look at school counseling. I think when I was younger, it was called Guidance Counselor, but they do much more than guidance. They really work with families and students to try to build and help them reach their full potential, both academically, but also in difficult times for social, emotional support. And just, we have incredible counselors here in Penfield and wanted to say a public thank you to the work that they do. Those are my staff honors. I want to talk a little bit about public comment. And so this is really on behalf of the board. And so my role as superintendent is to work for the school board as a collective whole. And so I think anybody that goes through, we have lots of information up on our website, but also if you go to like the New York State School Boards and for us, Monroe County School Boards, it's a reminder that individual school board members really don't have any decision-making power. Your power is within a board as a whole in these meetings that we have. And these are public meetings, really business meetings. And so my job is to provide recommendations to the school board and then ultimately make sure that whatever their goals are, I put forth. And, and that's really the, the oversight. One of the primary responsibilities for New York State School Boards, not just Penfield, but all New York State School Boards, is to adopt and revise policies for the district to achieve its goals. And so I can speak on behalf of the board. Lisa isn't here, but was going to speak too in terms of, really after a lot of careful consideration, the board determined the need for a formal policy outlining the purpose and process for public comment during regular board meetings. Most districts do have a policy, we do not. So public comment at regular board meetings will be paused until the policy can be drafted, comments from the community and stakeholders reviewed, and then ultimately approved by the board, like we would do for all policies. And then the draft public comment policy will be presented later at this meeting and can be found on the district's board doc site. If you go to Board of Education and then Policies, you can see all the policies under Review. That policy is there, it is just a draft. And then further information, including methods to contact the board and district, can be found in the superintendent's page of the website. So one of the things I started this year is sending out Parent Square messages to our parents of people who, students who are in our district. But there are sometimes updates that really are meant for also the greater community. And so those messages are put on the superintendent's website. And so we'll work through this process. And really, it says on, on that message that went out, you know, the board is always open to comment and you can reach out to the board via email at any time. The board also receives written letters to the district clerk that are forwarded to all board members. So that, that hearing from the community does not go away. The board attends PTA meetings and the PAB and PTO and SEPTA. The board does attend many meetings, is always looking for feedback. But in terms of until a policy is approved, public comment is paused for the time being. Questions from the board?
Board members' questions?
Thank you. So the school calendar, really exciting. One, because this is one of the earliest times we've been able to get this put together. Just a little bit about the school calendar. I share every year that school calendar is up to each individual district in New York State to create. But Monroe County is a, is a powerhouse across the state. We work well together. And so there is a committee that is run, that is hosted by BOCES 1 and BOCES 2 and it flip-flops every year. So this year, it was hosted by BOCES 2 and they bring in representatives of Monroe County school superintendents as well as representatives from the diocese. And per the, the rules, they bring in representation from some unions as well. And so that feedback's there. I happen to be a representative on that committee, so I got firsthand knowledge, was able to talk through the calendar. At, once there's a Monroe County-approved calendar, that really outlines the dates for BOCES. But what we really are looking for is all of our calendars across the county are not going to be exact because contracts have how many days teachers need to work, how many days students need to be in. A lot of that is very district-specific. But we, what we want to make sure is that our holidays, our spring recesses, our February recess, those are the same for planning purposes. And then just so you know, the county team also reaches out to all the counties that touch Monroe County in an attempt to try to make sure that breaks are similar because we know we have staff that might live in Ontario County and their kids go to school in Ontario County, but they work here in Monroe County. So we really work hard, a lot of time goes in. It starts at the end of December. We work through the month of January to try to make sure we have some consensus for our calendar. And again, not every single private school is represented, but the diocese represents the largest group of private schools within Monroe County, hence they're at the table as well for the conversation. So up for vote, for approval is this calendar. The whole calendar is in the agenda, but I just want to highlight a couple of the, the most important pieces. You know, for our staff, our teachers, our 10-month, really it starts in August. And then our first day for students is, is Wednesday, September 6. So that's the question I get the most, which is, can I plan my Labor Day vacation? So we are not starting before Labor Day. There are years we do. This is not one of them. So our first day for students is Wednesday, September 6. If you look through the December recess, I'm just going to be honest with you, the way the calendar falls, it's short. So anybody who works in a school system and all of our students, it is a short break. Christmas, December 25th is a Monday. And so that weekend sort of counts as the days before. Trust me, I have heard from everybody that it's always two weeks off and it's like, no, every seven years is two weeks. It really is how the calendar works, but it is a shorter break. However, if you jump to February recess is the typical. Across the state, February recess typically falls around President's Day. The spring recess is really interesting. So the, the calendar committee looks at it and it actually doesn't take into consideration religious holidays all the time unless they're federally, federally-supported holidays. But in this case, it happens to be March 29th is Good Friday. And so it will be, that day will be off. And then the whole next week is off. And here's what's really unique for next year is that April 8th is a Monday and there is no school. And this is, you will hear so much more from me as this comes, but that is the solar eclipse. So the solar eclipse is Monday, April 8th, 2024. And it really is, Rochester is right in the path of the eclipse. And so working with the Science Center and also the Department of Transportation in New York State, they are highly, they can't tell districts to take the day off, but they are highly pushing for districts to take the day off because that eclipse is going to be around 3:34. Don't quote me on the exact time. But it is really around, is it earlier than that?
It was 2:00.
2:00? So the problem is that people come in from all over to watch the eclipse. And then after it's over, then they hit the road. And so there are some examples, like a partial eclipse in St. Louis, where roads were shut down for like seven hours because of everybody trying to leave. And so they're really concerned because it fits around the time of our elementary dismissal. And so most districts in Monroe County, all of them that I have heard from are doing the same thing, which is extending our, our break in order to allow for the solar eclipse. I have been sort of deemed the solar eclipse nerd. I might be called doctor eclipse at some of my superintendent meetings because I keep bringing it up. But what I've heard and I do believe from other total eclipses that have happened, nothing like this has hit Rochester and it won't hit Rochester for many, many years after, is that right now, if you're not interested, it's no big deal. But the media will be starting to sell this more and more as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that you should really watch with your family. And so when we took this into consideration, it wasn't just for our students and safety for transportation, but also for staff and making sure that we had staff here because it is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I go back to our December break is short, but wow, look at that spring recess. It's Friday through the following week and Monday. And then PHS graduation, I just want to point out for those who have seniors next year, so our current juniors, we will get a date in there. We're just working. I can confirm that we will be back at RIT. We've enjoyed being outside at the ballpark, but there's a lot of anxiety around whether the weather will hold. And so we will be back at RIT, but we're taking a look at what day. But it will be during that last week of school. So it'll either be most likely the 27th, which is a Thursday, or the 25th, which is a Tuesday. But once we get that, we'll put that information out to everybody who needs to know. The other thing I want to mention on the proposed calendar is the last board meeting, we had a student group, Mosaics, come and talk about a desire to shift from Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day to just Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I wanted to thank Mosaics for coming out. I had scheduled a time for them yesterday afternoon to meet with them and talk through more. I happen to be homesick with a, with a little guy with a fever, so I couldn't meet them. I've rescheduled that. And for the Mosaics, if they're watching, and also for the community to know that the board hasn't had an opportunity to really discuss that. So I don't think it holds up proving the calendar. But if the board does decide to make a shift in, in what that date is called for Penfield, it would be, it would be something we could come back to. But it doesn't change the fact that that is a federal holiday that we won't have school that day. That is it I have for my long talk about the calendar. You can tell I'm really excited about it. Any questions on the calendar?
I have a question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Krista. At these conversations about the calendar, is there any discussion about holidays such as Jewish holidays off? So are families and our staff that celebrate those holidays are getting that time with their families as well? Like I celebrate Easter, so I'm always excited that I have it off, but I know that's not true for every person in our community. So I'm just curious if that's ever part of the conversation.
100%. So not just Jewish holidays, but other religions as well and, and their holiday dates. And so it is something that comes into play. It does count, because they're not considered federal holidays where the school has to be off, it becomes an individual school district's decision. And so what we have typically done is not recognize all holidays because it does get difficult. We recognize the, the federal holidays. Like we've had school in the past on Good Friday. That's not a requirement by the state to not have school that day. This time, it happens to fall where break is. There are some schools that will be in session on Good Friday because of the number of days they have to get. So it really becomes a local decision. And even around the solar eclipse or some other dates, because they're not federal, it's just a suggestion. And so same, so there are districts that have certain holidays off that we don't. But it is something that really, so the short answer is yes, they're talked about. And ultimately, the answer is it's up to each individual district. What we've tried to do in Penfield and will continue to work to is to make sure that we, we have a list of the religious holidays and try to not schedule things that are really parent-dependent, open houses. We can't, through athletics and the scheduling, you know, that typically goes. You, you schedule, so there might be an athletic event on a religious holiday. But in terms of looking at things that are really that parent-focused in regards to open house, curriculum night and things like that, we really have tried our best and continue to work to avoid those dates on our calendar, but still have school. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So something that the district continues to look at.
I have a piggyback question. Are you done? So if a student takes off because of a religious holiday?
It's a religious exemption, so it does not count against their attendance. So in New York State, the attendance really is excused or unexcused. And so those, those rules are all from New York State. So it's not really like our judgment call. But doing a religious, a holiday or a religious role, it would be considered under New York State as an excused holiday, if we're informed. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Board members, Krista.
So thanks, Kristin and Emily, because that's what I was going to ask. Not only do we have Jewish holidays to remember, but we have Muslim and Hindu holidays, Eid and Diwali.
Yep.
And coming from a culture where we celebrated, my family celebrated everything, you know, and it was mainly surrounding food. I think that's where I get my food thing from. But everybody was given the opportunity to celebrate with each other or you had the time off in order to do that. And I'm really glad to hear that if a kid who does not show up because they are celebrating a religious holiday, it's exempt.
Yep.
You know, I appreciate that. And then I have one more question for you. Is there a special formula for when school begins? Like before Labor Day, after Labor Day, you know?
So this is really exciting because I could talk about it. So the big formula typically is contracts. So there are some districts where they have collective bargaining groups that in the contract says school cannot start before Labor Day without full agreement. We are not one of those districts.
Okay.
So really, our formula is we have to get 180 student contact days plus we have to get enough days for our conferences and for the inevitable snow or weather day that we have to prepare. Per the state, we have to have 180 days and they actually, over the last few years, have dug into like minutes of instruction that we have to have. So that really is the, the formula, is to make sure that we can hit all of our state-mandated days. Our teacher contract is actually 187 days plus Day 188, which can be used in the summer as a day to come in and work. This calendar, and many times we do this working with our teachers' union, is this calendar actually has 188 teacher workdays and that's why we're starting before Labor Day. So teachers will have three days to do some meetings, to do the welcome back celebrations, but also to get into their classrooms and really work and prepare. They have three days before students show up.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, no problem. And again, a lot of it is contractual. So there are, like I said, there are some districts that have certain, like Good Friday, they, they can't have school that day per the contract. Or when they start, there are certain things like, just so you know, like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is really why I came to Penfield because the district I left had school that day. But in, but like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is not a requirement. It's just one of those past practices that we've always had in Penfield and many other districts too. But as certain years, the way the calendar falls, it's harder to get those days in. This year, because of that December break as being so short, we had some more time to look at and were able to give like the Monday for the eclipse and hear out the Science Center and the Department of Transportation.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
No problem.
Board members, any other questions? I have one more question. So this holiday recess?
Yes.
Right, when is this next seven, like years? So when is it going to be a longer? I know I was not the only one thinking.
Soon, soon. It'll be soon. Not soon enough, I'm sure. So something about a leap year, I don't know, we can look at. Two years?
I, I look every once in a while.
Do you?
Yeah. It's really, look, the calendar is like an emotional piece. So there was a, there were two years where we had a long. Remember, too, we also had in this district, two years of a long Memorial Day weekend? The way it worked out on the calendar, we had like this extra day. So we, we took the Friday before Memorial Day and then Memorial Day. And then like, once we did that, then every year, including in my own household, they're like, every Memorial Day is a four-day weekend. I'm like, no, not every Memorial Day. So I'm, I, and honestly, when you look at it, it's important for our, our students too to get those breaks. We, we push a lot, there's a lot of academic push. It's good for staff. But ultimately, we have families, again, I'm glad we're getting this approved early because it is, people are starting to look at, you know, potentially vacations and travel because it is, people are starting to look at, you know, potentially vacations and travel, and knowing this ahead of time is really helpful, so.
Thank you.
Way too much on the calendar, but I appreciate it. I think that wraps up me, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Okay. Thank you. Very difficult to follow in Eclipse Day. I never had an Eclipse Day growing up, but...
You never will again, either.
It's probably, it's probably a workday for a 12-month staff, I presume.
Probably.
Yeah. Good evening, Board. Good to see all of you. So two action items for me tonight, and then a lot of other information that I'll try to get through as succinctly as possible. The first action item is an emergency purchase authorization. So this relates to component supplies of rooftop HVAC units that were damaged back in that wind flash freeze day on December 23rd. Anytime we have any single commodity in excess of $20,000 in cost, we're supposed to bid that commodity out. We had spent a couple thousand dollars just on typical maintenance, and then based on what we're declaring an emergency situation, we spent another $17,000 or whatever it was, $17,500, and it put us over the $20,000 limit. So there are carve-outs in law that in these emergency exceptions, we can do that so long as we have board approval. And there really was only this one company that had them available, and we actually had to wait until the first week of school in January, when school returned. There was actually two spaces in Harris Hill that did not have duct heating. We brought in some, you know, mobile units that helped out. It wasn't particularly cold that week, so it all worked out. But it's just one of those situations in schools where, you know, anything can go wrong. So in order to be compliant with general municipal law and our policies, we need that approval from the Board. So tonight, I'm going to mostly focus on budget development for next school year, the '23-'24 year, looking specifically at revenue. So first, local funding by way of local property taxes. So we'll look at the property tax cap formula, the local levy limit, and we'll also look at Governor Hochul's executive budget proposal that she put forward last week. The second item for approval is approving that tax cap formula, just the formula itself. That's what we need to turn over to the state agencies by March 1st. So we're not setting the actual tax levy tonight. We're just setting what the cap is that dictates and manages how that works at the local level. And then I want to go over the transportation expenditure draft and bus purchase plans that Mr. Galloway had touched on a little bit earlier. So where we are in the budget development process, we're in the yellow area here. Green is complete. Red is still to come. Looking at revenue projections as they fluctuate, appropriations is just the accounting word for planned expenditures, and building towards a full first draft budget at our next meeting on March 7th. So revenue in Penfield, about two-thirds comes from local funding by way of local property taxes, residential and commercial properties. About a third comes from state aid. So we'll go through all the different state aid categories in a few slides. And then all of our other revenue accounts for about 5%. The biggest of that all other is far and away the county sales tax that we receive from Monroe County and a little bit from Wayne County as well. And then everything else, user fees, interest on our bank accounts, things like that. So I want to start off first with the local funding, since it makes up the biggest component of our annual revenue. If you haven't seen this wonderful formula, this is what went into effect back in 2011. So it's commonly called the tax cap formula. It's actually the local levy limit formula. And it has various steps along the way, so I'll just quickly go through it, because I go through it every year. You start with the current year taxes that were levied back for this '22-'23 school year back in September. If you have any errors in your prior year calculation, that's where you make it up in the reserve offset. You multiply your prior year levy by the tax base growth factor, which I'll jump into in a minute. That's a number that comes from New York State Department of Tax and Finance, which essentially accounts for all of the new permitted growth in your community in the last year. You add any pilots receivable that you received in the prior year. So pilots is a payment in lieu of taxes. That's an agreement made between the county and any kind of new businesses, typically a tax break, less than they would pay in order to spur economic development. You subtract any capital tax exclusion that you had in the prior year. So what this means is that if you have more debt service, then you have building aid coming in. You could levy for that, that difference. We always have more building aid coming in than we do debt service, so we don't have that capital exclusion. And then if you had a tort exclusion, the formula allows, if you had a lawsuit or judgment against the district, an access of 5% of the budget. So for us, that would be $6 million or something like that. Fortunately, we've never been in that scenario. You're legally allowed to levy for it, because there's no other mechanism by which to save against that kind of financial exposure. And then this is where the 2% tax cap comes into effect. So the next step is multiplying where you're at times the allowable levy growth factor. The allowable levy growth factor is measured by prior year average CPI, Consumer Price Index. That's a common measure of inflation. As we'll see in a forthcoming slide, inflation last year on average was 8%, but that number is capped at 2%. So the first 10 years of the formula is we were kind of in a lower inflationary environment. The 2% worked. It kind of made sense. There was a couple of years where it was a little over 2% or it was under 2%. The last two years, it's been close to 5% and then 8%. Fortunately, we've had the state funding come through to make up that gap, but it's a real problem that probably needs some advocacy efforts to address if we're going to continue in an inflationary environment. You subtract any pilots receivable for the coming fiscal year. We'll walk through what that looks like for us. We actually have a pilot dropping off, so you'll see the difference between this current year and what next year will be. Any available carryover, if any. So what this means is that if you don't levy up to your formula cap in the prior year, you get to bring over a portion of that in the current year. Not all of it, but a portion of it, should you need it. And that brings you to your tax levy limit. At that point, you're allowed to add in any coming year exclusions. Again, those same three exclusions, based on torts, a capital tax levy, and if the ERS or TRS systems increase their rates by more than 200 basis points, so if it went from 10% contribution rate to 12% or more contribution rate, you can levy for the difference. Coincidentally, since this formula has gone into effect, neither of the pension systems have increased the rates by more than 2% a year. So that also doesn't happen this year. So that brings you to your maximum tax levy limit. The first item I want to look at is that tax base growth factor, as I mentioned. That's the first part of the formula. So we, Penfield, are at .10046, which means that all of the dollar assessments in our community, new growth last year accounted for a literal under half a percent. That's typically where we are in terms of development. You can see Spence Port's a major outlier there, at almost 5% growth last year, and that's what I'm told is attributed to the new Amazon facility that's within their school district, all the way down to Wheaton-Trelawney, which had zero. So no permitted growth from the state. So in theory, what this means is that we would raise our tax levy by .46%, and that would strictly just capture the new growth, and there wouldn't be any other effect, purely in principle. The second variable in that formula I want to touch on is that allowable levy growth factor measured by inflation. So you can see the chart, since the laws went into effect back in 2011, what the allowable levy growth was for the formula, again, capped at that 2% number, what the actual rate of inflation was for that year. And then on the right, I just showed how that 8% is calculated, because I've even had a couple colleagues ask, "Well, inflation and the numbers came out in January at 6.5%. Why is it 8%?" What they do is look at a yearly average. So what this is, if you look at the very top, January 2022 relative to January 2021 was an annual increase of 7.5% and all the way down the line. So, you know, inflation peaked in June of last summer, 9.1%. So that's June 2022 relative to June 2021. The Fed has precipitously raised rates over that time, seemingly bringing down inflation a little bit, but obviously still way higher than we've been in many years. So the rate of inflation used for this calculation is 8%, but again, it's capped at 2% by statute. And here's just that visual representation where you can see the discordance the last two years and what the inflation rate was and what the allowable levy growth factor was in the formula. So here is our draft tax cap calculation for approval tonight. We start with that prior year levy of $68.3 million, multiply it by that tax base growth factor. We add in prior year pilots, so we had just under $200,000 in pilot payments last year. You then multiply by that allowable growth factor, that's that 2%. You then subtract any pilots for the coming year. As I mentioned, we only have three pilots for next year. We have one dropping off, so that's why that revenue goes down to $135,000 relative to that 198 up above. You add in any available carryover, which we do have. We were under our tax cap last year considerably. So we have $1 million of allowable carryover that gets added into the formula, and then we don't have any coming year exclusions, just like we had no prior year exclusions. So it brings us to a maximum allowable levy of $71,88,285, or a $2.7 million increase or 4.07%. So what that means is that whatever levy the Board chooses, so long as it's under 4.07% for next year, it requires 50% community approval, and that may vote. If the Board chooses to break the tax cap, that's the verbiage, it would require a supermajority approval, which is dictated in legislation as 60% approval. So again, we're not setting the levy tonight. All we're doing is looking at the tax cap formula to see how to build our budget within the revenue parameters afforded to us. Before I move on to state funding, does anybody have any questions about the local funding mechanisms?
Board members, questions?
Yeah, I know, it's a lot of information.
I just have a comment. I'm really, really appreciative that you get so excited by numbers and that you do this so well. Yeah, so thank you, Dan. Yeah, I have some homework to do.
Of course, I appreciate that.
It's really important for our math students when they ask, "When am I going to use these parentheses in terms..."
Right, you know.
Dan knows every day.
Yeah, go talk to Dr. Driffl.
But it really is, I think the way you explain it to Dan is helpful. And looking at the process, because it is complicated. And I appreciate you just mentioning, too, that all we're doing is per requirement of the state, setting the allowable levy, the calculation, but that doesn't mean that's where we're at. It's just we have to do that per the state as part of the process.
Correct. Yeah, I want to be real clear about that. So the next biggest piece of our revenue equation is the state aid that we receive on an annual basis. So this was released last week. It was the very last possible day by law where the governor can release it. So overall state operating budget is $125 billion, is an increase of 2% in her proposal. School aid makes up $34 billion of that 125. Schools saw an increase of $3 billion or 10% year-over-year increase in her proposal. It does fully fund the third year of the Foundation Aid Formula phase-in that the legislature and governor have committed to for multiple years. That foundation aid equates to about $24 billion of the $34 billion in total education aid. One of the new requirements this year, and it's specifically only for next year, '23-'24, is schools receiving an increase in foundation aid above 3%, which you'll see in a moment. We're way above that. We're required to earmark some dollars towards 3 through 8 success. We don't know exactly what that looks like, but the number that we need to add in new spending, because it's specifically written as a supplement funding as opposed to a supplant funding, so you can't just throw the money at current programs, it's about $750,000. So that's going to be one of the requirements that we go back as a team and try to figure out what that looks like for us next year, but it does look like it's going to be a spending requirement of the foundation aid we receive. And you'll see, we're getting quite a bit of foundation aid for next year. Some of the, more seasoned board members will remember that in years past, the governors would potentially play with the formulas around the expense-based aids. So these are the BOSI's aids, the transportation aids, the building aids that we get. Governor Hochul just commit, proposed keeping those as-is and fully funded, so that's great news. As we mentioned earlier with Ms. Oppone's presentation, the proposal does expand UPK access, but the issues remain. So it's still the same amount of funding per pupil. It's $5,400 as it was 20 years ago. It still doesn't include student transportation, so accessibility is an issue. As with new, last year, all of the new program has to be full day. So there's some families that just don't want full-day K. We have proposals out now, obviously. We'll see what those look like in the next couple of weeks. So there may be an opportunity to serve more than 116 students this year, but we have to see what that looks like. And Dr. Maloney would have to go through an application process and things like that to amend what our program looks like. It is good news that they're expanding the number of slots, but again, if we can't necessarily fill all those slots as-is, it'd almost make more sense to increase the per-pupil amount if they're already allocating the dollars. She proposed an extension of retiree earnings cap waiver for one more year, so this has been really helpful for us this year. What this means is that if you retire in New York State under the ERS or TRS system, you're not allowed to make more than $35,000 with a public employer. So sometimes you might want to bring back a teacher to do a long-term sub thing for a year, and they can't do it. So what they put into place this year was a waiver for that, and it's been helpful for us in other districts. And that was proposed, again, for one more year, based on some of the labor shortages that we've been seeing in the region. She proposed tying minimum wage to inflation. So the last couple of years, the Department of Labor, the laws around minimum wage have been that the Department of Labor meets every year to discuss economic conditions in a march towards bringing minimum wage to $15 an hour. It's been 70 cents per year over the last couple of years, but this year, they raised it a dollar. It went from 1320 to 1420 on January 1st. So we don't know exactly what will happen come next January 1st. We've gotten out ahead of it with our unions, that we have very few people or positions making minimum wage. But going forward, that could be a factor in our collective bargaining, that we'd have to change language to obviously amend what minimum wage looks like, starting rates look like. Unfortunately, it did not include a free breakfast or lunch proposal. I know there's been a lot of pressure from the legislature to include that. We found a lot of success with that during some of the COVID protocols. So we'll see how that conversation goes in the next couple of months. It did not modify the current zero emission bus target for 2027. They did add a stipulation that every August, there needs to be an annual report done on what that looks like towards the feasibility in 2027, but no substantial changes. And last year, there was a proposal to raise the reimbursable salary rate for BOSI's career and technical education teachers. That number has been the same since 1990, 1991. I think it's $30,000. And obviously, since then, teacher salaries have come up a little bit. So for the, we have like 90 kids in CT programs at BOSI's, and we only get aided on the first $30,000 of a teacher's salary. So it makes sense to raise that. So those were some of the highlights overall. And then here's what it looks for, looks like for Penfield. So as I mentioned, that top-line number of foundation aid, this is the full foundation aid formula phase-in. So this law was put on the books back in 2008, and we finally now are actually seeing what the formula will provide. If you look at the bottom there, the red line is the aid that was due to us by way of the formula, and the orange is the aid that was actually paid. And you can see that, you know, hockey stick incline in the last couple of years, we've marched towards what that looks like. So it's an increase in $6 million in foundation aid, 31% year-over-year. I don't want to jinx it, but it feels like a generational, once-in-a-career sort of influx of state resources, and it's great news. We do see that the UPK dollars afforded to us increased, but again, that's dependent on increased slots. So what we can do to fill that, we'll see. I should note that that's a grant that's not part of our general fund revenue. It's separately accounted for. BOSI's aid is projected at $2.9 million, but I actually think that'll be higher. We haven't put in a lot of our big BOSI's purchases yet this year, and the governor's just using data from November 15th. So I actually think when it comes to budget time, that'll be, that'll be a bit higher for us. Excess cost aid relates to aid we receive for students with disabilities, both in public settings and private settings, up about 13%, which is about in line with what I was expecting based on prior year costs. Instructional material aid is one-to-one grant dollars that the state provides us for textbooks, software, library materials, and computer hardware. It's based on a per-pupil allotment, and we had a per-pupil increase, so that's why it's projected to be up a little bit. Transportation aid, I actually think that'll be lower. Again, that's based on projections from November. As we continue to have bus driver shortages, we're not spending all of our transportation budget. So I think the reimbursable aid on our spending this year, that'll be a little bit less. I think that'll offset with the BOSI's coming up, transportation aid coming down. And then our building aid is the aid that we get on prior year capital projects sprout out over 20 years. So it's an all-in-all increase of $7 million total. It's more like $6 million to the general fund when you take out the UPK increase, because that's a grant. But it's, you know, it's a lot of money from the state, no question about it. So again, it's not finalized. It's subject to legislative approval, so we'll see what that looks like. So revenue looks great. I don't think it's going to be a year where we're looking for any kind of staffing cuts or anything like that. Quite the contrary. As I mentioned, there is a new spending rule that we will have to dedicate new dollars towards a new staff or new programming in some capacity. We're going to have to go back and figure out what that looks like as a team and hopefully bring some ideas to the Board at our next meeting. We'll assess the local funding after a larger spending forecast that's presented at our next meeting, but based on all of those state dollars, I'm optimistic that we're not going to be at our cap for next year. And again, like I said, that is all still subject to legislative approval. And again, like I said, that is all still subject to legislative approval. Any questions on state aid before I jump into preliminary transportation budget?
Board members' questions?
No.
No, thank you.
A quick question. Transportation aid, you listed that, is the money for electric buses separate from that?
No, that would be included.
That'd be rolled into it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, all of our bus purchases, so buses are aided over five years typically, and they're included as a part of that calculation.
There was no special grants for electric buses?
We got a special grant, which I'm going to touch on in a few moments, for the electric buses, but right now, the state isn't giving any other above and beyond.
But that is separate, though?
That would be separate, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, correct, sorry. So let's jump into that transportation budget. So Mr. Galla spoke earlier tonight about some of the operational challenges that they're facing. Budget-wise, things are not as different as they were last year. So we're projecting personnel costs, so that is not only our drivers, but it's the attendants, it's the mechanics, it's the office staff, to be up 3.7% year-over-year. Equipment is just a $7,000 increase based on what they need. Contractual decrease comes from that reduced use of outside contractor transportation that we really heavily relied on this year. And again, just major kudos to Mike and Andy and Bob and Charlene and the whole team over there, getting really creative with routing, being really efficient, able to save us a good chunk of money there. Supplies are up considerably this year. That is mainly due to fuel. It's also bus parts and tires have gone up quite a bit, so we're seeing a 26% increase in supplies. The bus garage operations is up $13,000. It's mostly attributed to utilities, so the electric and natural gas for that building have gone up quite a bit. And then, this is an optimistic line item increases, that we're hopeful that BOSI's will turn around their hiring a little bit, be able to provide us a little bit more support so that we don't have to go out and contract with a third-party vendor if we don't have to, and we can instead rely on our local BOSI's who may know the kids better, may know the roads better, things like that. So all in all, it's a $289,000 departmental increase, $4.9 million, just under $5 million for next year, a 6% increase. This will change a little bit as we move through the spring, but this one's pretty solid. I'm comfortable with these numbers at this point. So again, Mr. Galla talked about our bus replacement plan for next year. So last year was the first year in many years where we paused our bus replacement based on COVID. We just weren't putting as many miles on the buses, weren't using them as much, so we didn't need to replace buses last year. So this year, we're going to get back into our cycle. So we're proposing five large diesel buses at a cost of $787,000, two large electric buses at $789,000. If you remember a couple meetings back, I said that those electric buses were approaching $400,000 in costs, and that's reflected here. Two mini-gas buses, so this is staggering. These buses, five years ago, were $60,000 each, and now with the new state contract that just was released in January, they're almost $100,000 each. Our current provider isn't even making the mini-buses anymore. So that's one of the other reasons that we switch bus manufacturers for next year. With the $53,000 in trade-in value, the net aggregate cost of these buses will be $1.7 million, because that comes out of our capital reserve. Anytime we make a purchase from the capital reserve, it's subject to voter approval. So it'll be one of the propositions on that May 16 vote ballot, and then it would require approval by the Board of Education in March to bring the proposition forward to the community in May. So I want to talk a little bit more about that electric bus purchase. So planning to purchase two electric buses within the overall fleet replacement schedule, unlike the other buses that are being manufactured now with a letter of intent for September delivery, these ones are actually ready to go, because not a lot of districts are buying electric buses yet. They're already available. And as Mr. Galla mentioned, we were lucky enough to have them for a couple of weeks in the fall, a bunch of people drove them, they loved them, they appreciated that they were quiet, kids seemed to like them, you know, when we kind of showed it to them. So these two will have no cost to Penfield residents at all, $0. And that's a combination of a New York State grant that we received over a year ago now, the picture there from Assemblymember Lunsford presenting the grant to the Board of Education, and a combination of regular New York State transportation aid. So the grant for $250,000 covers that local share. So the state gives us for every transportation purchase, 73.9% of the purchase, leaving of that nearly $800,000, a $206,000 local share. So that $206,000 is more than made up by the $250,000 grant. And again, as Mr. Galla mentioned earlier, the remaining grant funds, so that $40,000, will go towards the infrastructure associated with making sure those buses have appropriate charging utilities. Whenever a new school district brings electric buses into the fold, the bus manufacturer always schedules a meeting with the local emergency responders, so Penfield ambulance, Penfield fire, Monroe County sheriffs, just to learn about safety mechanisms, how to identify an electric bus if you come across one, how to treat, you know, an accident scene, things like that. I know that's on top of mind for some people. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
So, look ahead, so more budget discussions throughout the spring. I know there's some upcoming advocacy efforts. I know we'll probably talk about the legislative breakfast, that was this past weekend. I know NISBA has some things going on, NISCUS, ASBO. So maybe some of those items that we talked about before, those free meals, those OCCTE salary reimbursements, some of those kind of talking points. The levy formula is due to New York State by March 1st. Our next board meeting is March 7th. At that point, we'll have Mr. English here to go over his department review for the year, and we'll look at a full expenditure budget draft and identify any budget gap that exists between those projected expenditures and where we're sitting with revenue. The next meeting is March 21st, at which we'll do a deep dive of our BOSI's budget. We'll display any pertinent budget updates as it relates to cost or revenue out of Albany, news. We'll finally identify those May propositions through board approval, and then with that, we also approve the legal notices to start posting that that third Tuesday in May will be the vote date. So with that, I open it up to any board discussion.
Board members, questions, comments? That's a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for all you do. Yeah. I really appreciate how you explain everything very clearly, and it makes sense right now, and hopefully it'll make sense when I go over it again.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
School finance is very opaque, so demystifying it sometimes, you just have to get into it.
Right, right, yeah. So thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I've missed the budget presentations.
Yeah, I bet you have.
I have, but I think it's important, you know, for the community too, when you talk about transportation, one of the things that many of us here is, why do you keep buying buses? We didn't buy any buses last year, and so also, and I know you'll talk later through our budget process around the reserves and having that bus reserve for a reason, so we're not going back to necessarily each year having to go back to the general fund, but being able to use it through the reserve, which I think is huge in terms of that thoughtful planning that the district has continued to do a nice job with. And I do think it is some really positive news. I've sat at this table when the state budget has not been positive, and so then you're really looking at those impacts. So it isn't a nice place to be. It is all our tax dollars in some form or fashion, but we don't say no thank you when the state increases foundation aid and looks to fund. So it is a good spot to be in as we plan for that budget for May. I will now shift over to Dr. Maloney, who's going to walk through a bit of the professional learning plan, and that will be up for the board's approval for the amendments later in this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. As you may recall, in July, each July, you approve the professional learning plan, which is a requirement from State Education Department, which outlines the professional learning that the district is planning on facilitating and participating in over the course of that school year. That professional learning plan also includes our mentor plan, as well as the organizations that the district has sought approval from you for continuing teacher and leadership education, which we lovingly refer to as CTL-E. And you'll probably hear that acronym frequently when talking about professional learning. So since that initial approval in July, we have had four organizations that we have been using for professional learning. Now, the way that CTL-E works, any, anyone hired after 2004, and that would be teaching assistants who are at a Level 3, which are those who have 18 hours of college credit, any teachers and any administrators have to complete 100 hours of professional learning that is CTL-E accredited within five years. And New York State approves certain organizations, and if the state has approved those organizations, we do not need to seek your approval. But the nice thing is, we are able to add additional organizations outside of what New York State has already approved. So in this case, we would like your approval to add, actually amend, the professional learning plan from July. So you'll see SIPS, which is Stackable Instructionally Embedded Portable Science Assessments Project. So I know many times we've talked about the new science standards that have come into play, and now, after we've implemented those new standards, we are beginning to prepare for the new science assessments. And this organization, I believe, has been contracted through New York State to write the new assessments, and they were looking for teachers who were interested in participating in professional learning in order to work through these assessments and learn more about them. So there is some virtual training from SIPS, as well as our TOSA, who works with science, Shane Waterson. She also has been trained to provide some of the SIPS professional learning. Really Great Reading, Really Great Reading is a science of reading, organization isn't the correct word. They provide professional learning materials that are all science of reading-based, and we have been working hard to have our teachers, particularly our reading teachers, trained in the science of reading, and this group provides such training. The Jewish Foundation of Greater Rochester, I have an error there, it should be the Jewish Federation of Greater Rochester, my apologies. And we were recently awarded a grant, three districts, they were looking for three districts to partner with around delivering professional learning on how to respond to antisemitism, Jewish history, and how to embed antisemitism in the curriculum. And through Kevin Marriott, who is our Assistant Director for Professional Learning, he was able to snag and get us involved as part of this grant through the Jewish Federation of Greater Rochester. They have amazing professional learning that we have begun to start to offer. Speechpathology.com. So Kevin should be awarded an award, I think, from the other directors of professional learning in the area, because this is a challenge for not only directors of professional learning, but particularly for speech-language pathologists. So speech-language pathologists, not only do those hired after 2004 need the 100 hours of CTL-E credit, they also need additional hours for national ASHA certification and licensure. And it is very difficult to find training that is ASHA-approved and then can also meet the CTL-E. And Speechpathology.com is one such organization. The training is virtual, it is synchronous or asynchronous, and we're very excited to offer those opportunities to our speech-language pathologists. And Kevin recently shared this fabulous professional learning with other directors of professional learning in the area, and they are excited as well. I think many will be also going to their Board of Educations to seek approval. So that's really what we're looking for, is simply an amendment, approval of those four organizations for professional learning. Board members' questions?
No? Mark?
I have a really quick one.
Go ahead.
Can you, I'm sorry, Mark.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Because mine are quick.
Can you remind me, what is after, they need 100 hours of CTL-E, and this is after they've been with us for how long? Or, like, can you explain that to me?
So they need to accumulate 100 hours of professional learning within five years.
Within five years of being...
And that's to maintain their certification.
Every five years. So every five years, they need to do this? Okay. And it's done on their own time, or we allow them time to do it?
It can be both. So our, I'll give you an example. Our faculty meetings have now become all professional learning around the work that we've been doing, whether it's the Culturally Responsive Sustainability Education Framework or the Grading for Equity work, and those were able to count for CTL-E. And then some of the sessions, like I mentioned, that are asynchronous, that teachers are doing on their own, if they show proof of attendance, they can receive CTL-E hours. So, and we're very fortunate, we use Frontline, which is a system that keeps track of it all, and then teachers just upload the log, for lack of a better word, from Frontline into the state ed department system to show that they completed the required hours.
Okay, because that was my next question. How do you keep track of all of this? Because there's so many people on different, you know, on a similar journey, but at a different spot.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
On the bullets, SIPS, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get what they're going to be doing. You explained it, but I didn't quite follow.
So they're actually learning, so coming with the new science standards, our new science assessments that are not simply paper and pencil. They require students to perform, they refer, the term that they use is investigations, but think of them as little tiny experiments, not tiny, but short experiments. And so the teachers are learning how to administer those experiments, as well as the types of questions that will be used, and how to prepare students for those types of questions. Very different from your typical multiple-choice, you know, how far away is the moon from Earth? Much more application-based.
Okay, thank you. I will tell you that on the solar eclipse day, just so you know, that will come up. We're doing great learning. I think the biggest piece too, for the board to understand is, is like, we're already utilizing these organizations to help with professional learning, but by amending the professional learning plan from the district, allowing that, then it allows our staff to get the CTL-E credit they need. So it's really, it's great professional learning, we can use it anyway, but if it's not approved, then it doesn't count towards their hours. So I really see it as an opportunity to help our staff, you know. And again, there are districts who do this, and there are districts who might say, you know, those hours are yours, you've got to figure it out, but we really work to try to, you know, hire and then cultivate our staff and help them get their CTL-E hours required.
Thank you.
And then the other question was, when you talk about the science of reading, you're looking at the Really Great Reading. Can you explain, again, reading and science? I mean, obviously, they're not the same thing, but, you know, how do you, you know, it's the, you're talking about the science of teaching reading. What is that science? How does that work?
So, that's a really good question mark for 850. So, the, I think the best explanation is that the science of reading, there's so much research that's been done in how our brains work, and the science of reading is based on how our brains work. So if you think about how we learned reading, we learned reading on, there was no research to support how we learned reading. Now, we are so fortunate to have so much research at our fingertips, and the science of reading is built literally... is built literally on how the brain learns reading. And it is fascinating. I know you all do building visits. Maybe at some point, we could visit some classrooms when they are, Super Kids is the program that we use at the elementary level. And it's really, students look at patterns, they understand how words are formed, and a lot around, okay, so consonance, vowel, consonant, consonant, and that pattern, when that pattern occurs, what letters follow. And it's really fascinating. And once students begin to pick up the patterns and their brains, that's how the reading is acquired. So from this math, you know, high school math teacher, that was, at 8:50, that was pretty, I was looking at Kristen, she's shaking her head.
Thank you.
And you've seen, just as a past, Sheena Conway has come as a Director of Humanities and presented on the science of reading. And really, it's sort of, it is a growing trend for school districts to start looking at, but it's what Leslie said, in terms of that really connected to the brain science of how, of how reading works. And so it really has been our philosophy in looking at Super Kids and other curriculum and other learning that our students do. So it's been, it's been really good. And teachers have, have really shifted, too, in taking a look at it. So I think that concludes superintendent reports.
Yes. That concludes superintendent's reports.
It does, sure does.
Okay. We are on financial items. So there's recommended action that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $4,084.54 to the 2022-23 budget as shown above. The amounts submitted, both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $4,084.54 to the 2022-23 budget as shown above. The amounts submitted, both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? Next is emergency purchase resolution. Whereas the Penfield Central School District Administration has determined that heating and cooling coils, heating and cooling coils and unit ventilators located at Harris Hill Elementary School and Penfield High School unexpectedly failed. And whereas the Board of Education has received and considered the report of its administration regarding the necessity for the immediate repair and/or replacement of the failed heating and cooling coils to make the unit ventilators operational, therefore be it resolved that pursuant to 1034, the general municipal law, the Board of Education declares that an emergency exists because repair and/or replacement of the heating coils is necessary for the protection of the health and safety of students and staff, and for protection of the district's property, and hereby declares the work to be an ordinary contingent expense. The maximum estimated cost of the repair and/or replacement of the failed heating and cooling coils as determined by the School District's administration is not to exceed May I have a motion to approve the emergency purchase resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby approves the submission of the tax levy limit of $71,088,285, as calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the State Comptroller, the Commissioner of Education, and the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance. This tax levy limit represents an increase of 4.07%. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? I have a recommended action that the 2022-23 Professional Learning Plan amendments be approved as presented today, on February 7, 2023. Can I have a motion in a second that the 2022-23 Professional Learning Plan amendments be approved and presented today? February 7, 2023. Go ahead, sorry.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? I have a recommended action that the Board approves the 2023-24 school calendar as presented. Can I have a motion in a second that the Board approves the 2023-24 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? Okay, policies for review, or first read. We have two policies for first read?
Can I speak to them?
Yes, I do.
Yep, so we have two policies. One, I discussed earlier in superintendent's report, which is a new policy, 1515, public comment at board meetings. And so I won't go over that, but it's there. It's also both policies. All policies under review can be found on our webpage. If you go to School Boards, and then go down to Policies, it'll open up Board Docs, and you'll see the policies under review right there. The other one is Therapy Dogs in School. And so there are, this is a revision to that policy. The Therapy Dogs in School policy really has, has two areas it oversees. One is therapy dogs, actually, that come to work with staff members who are approved. No real changes are made in that portion of the policy. The other part of Therapy Dogs, the policy used to read about, it was called Reading Therapy Dogs in School. And so at our elementary levels, for many years, we would have dogs come in with an organization that brought them in, and kids could read to the dogs, which might have to do with the science of reading, but I'm not sure. But it really was around connection and hearing them speak. Over the last few years, not just us, but many, have really dealt with therapy dogs supporting students in trauma, student crisis, and quite honestly, kids love to see dogs. So we've removed the language on reading therapy dogs, and just left it as therapy dogs. And it is up to the building principal to work with organizations that can bring in therapy dogs to support the day. So they'll still be in the library occasionally and work through, but at the high school, they have been utilized sometimes to be in classrooms. If you walk through our school, you'll see a Rock Therapy Dog sticker, and that means that the teacher in the classroom supports the dog. So when they are here on an informal basis, they can pop in and be there to support. So it's really just some language around, it's aligning to our practice, that it's not just for reading therapy dogs, but for therapy dogs. And then the rest of the policy is that they have to be reviewed, it has to be an organization that's approved, and that's really it. So take a look at those, and the Board will accept through the website, through the Board email, or directly to our district clerk, any feedback and suggestions for either of those policies on first read.
Okay, next, it's policies for second read and approval.
And so we've gone over, we went over these, the last meeting, and I can just share that we have not received any feedback, and so I think they're up for approval at this meeting.
Okay, I have a recommended action that the Board of Education approves the following policies as presented. Policy 8110, Curriculum Development Resources and Evaluation. 8130, Equal Educational Opportunities. 8130 R1, Equal Educational Opportunities Regulation. Can I have a motion in a second that the above policies be approved and, or as presented?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor, none opposed? Okay, President's Remarks. So Board Candidates. The Terms of Board of Education Members, Mrs. Lisa Benati-Chitzy and Mrs. Krista Khan, will expire June 30, 2023. The Term of Office for a Board Member is three years. Board Candidate Nominating Petitions may be obtained at the District Office beginning on February 27, 2023. Fifty-three signatures of qualified voters are needed on the petition, which must be filed with the clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on April 17, 2023. Candidates should supply their personal biographical data and statement of qualifications and issues to the District Clerk by April 10, 2023, to meet the printing deadline for the budget newsletter. I never knew how hard it was to read this when you're in front of people.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. The Annual Monroe County School Boards Association Perspective School Board Candidate Seminar has been scheduled for Saturday, March 25, 2023. The District's Meet the Candidates Night is to be determined. And next is Committee Meetings. Did I miss one? Oh, sorry. BOSI's Board Candidates. The following BOSI's Board Term Members end as of June 30, 2023. Lisa Latin, a resident of the Penfield Central School District, and Christine De Turk, a resident of the Honeyway Falls Lima School District. BOSI's Board Members are elected by their component member boards and voted on the same day designated for the vote on the tentative administrative budget. This year, the BOSI's Administrative Budget Vote is April 25, 2023, and will occur at a special Board of Education meeting.
So can I just, as a reminder, this is one of those timelines that the local school boards have to vote on the, approve their board vote for the BOSI's Board Members on the same day. And so some years, we have a board meeting on that day, and it's very easy. This is not one of those years. So the Board Clerk will be reaching out, and will have to get a special board meeting for, solely for the purpose of this board electing or the Penfield resident running for the BOSI's Board. It's a short meeting, but it all has to do with timelines and regulation.
All right, Committee Meetings. Information Exchange.
Information Exchange was fascinating. I don't remember what it was. I'm sorry. I'm having a little, I'm going to remember, going to remember, but I, but I don't. It is, I'm sorry.
We can revisit.
It's on the website.
Yes, think about it.
Really thinking.
All right, we'll come back.
Come back to me.
Labor Relations, Mark.
All right. Labor Relations was, the last meeting was on January 18. It was just right after our last board meeting. This was a presentation by Stephen Carling, who's the eternity for Harris Beach, talking about collective bargaining in, you know, this period of high inflation, and a lot of other stress factors. And he covered a lot of items around the collective bargaining, the patterns. You know, there's pressures, not only due to inflation, there's pressures related to labor shortages, you know, the salary increases, you know, from one group, you know, create expectations from another group, and not necessarily every group, every bargaining unit, I should say, is in the same position in terms of where their salary is relative to inflation, relative to other districts. So, you know, it's, the people, the bargaining units try to look at each other, but that's not necessarily the appropriate thing to do. But it does cause just another facet of the negotiations. And then, you know, what, there's, you know, there's also a trend towards different incentives to try to, you know, try to offset salary increases for incentives, and there's a lot of creativity around that, whether it's retention, recruiting, or bonuses, I'm sorry, retention or recruiting, you know, there's different kinds of things that go on. And again, it's, those are the patterns. And then, you know, they went over the outcome trends related to, you know, the average increases that around the district, around the county, you know, different bargaining units are getting, and some of the, some of the incentives that are going on. So that was, it was covered, it was very, I think we've all experienced it, we've all, you know, it's, it's very informative. You know, the important thing about all of this is, is, you know, negotiation, our two parties who have slightly different interests. That doesn't mean it's adversarial. And the important thing is, and I think Penfield's been very good about that, is even when we, you know, we can't reach an agreement, and it takes a long time to do that, it doesn't become adversarial. I think, you know, we're still in the classroom, in the buildings, we're still partners. And I think, you know, to the administration, to the, to the faculty and staff, and to the leaders of those bargaining units, I think it's a credit to everybody to understand the bigger picture, which is, we're here together before we negotiate, we're here together after we negotiate, and we don't let that get damaged. So that's it.
Thank you. And you're up for Steering Committee.
That's me. I'll go to the other tab here. Steering Committee was on January 25. This is really the representatives from all the committees of Monroe County School Board Association, as well as the executive team. And they, we just talk about what goes on. It's quarterly, you know, discussion about New York State School Board Association engagement. You know, there's, with the COVID, it affected the level of engagement we've been getting with New York State School Board Association, so there's some conversations on that. The, our new, and new, I think she's in her maybe her first or second year, but the president of the Monroe County School Board Association, Amy West, is trying to attend as many board meetings as possible, you know, within her limited availability. I don't know if she's reached out to you or Lisa?
Yeah, Amy Thomas.
Did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy Thomas.
Yep, this is her first, first year in the role she has, where, where, there will be a scheduled time, but we haven't solidified a date yet.
Okay, and Amy Thomas is the new Director of Monroe County Association, and the two Amys, I switch.
No problem.
You know, they talked about the Advocacy Day in December, which, you know, had, didn't have as many legislators as they had hoped. They're also looking at revising, they are revising the Monroe County School Board Association mission and bylaws. They're currently 12 years old. A lot is, I mean, they're nine years old, a lot have happened in those nine years, so it's appropriate to look at those again.
Thank you, Mark. Legislative Committee, Krista.
So I went, and it was because the Legislative Breakfast was on Saturday. So it was just a really concise meeting where we just made clear of the position papers that we were presenting to legislators. And a big piece of it was advocacy etiquette, and how we present ourselves to these legislators, because we are there on behalf of public education, which is amazing and wonderful, and why it is amazing and wonderful, and what we do for our children, what our children need, and how they can support us. So there was, the two co-chairs, I'm forgetting his first name, is it Paul Kakanovich?
Mark.
Mark? Oh, he's a Mark. Okay, there you go. I should remember that one. And Sarah Palucio, Palusi, Palucio, I'm sorry. They are just really great. I am a big fan of Sarah. She is very efficient and very organized, and I appreciate her so much, because as a newer board member, things are very clear, like what is expected, what we're working on. And so that was just a really short meeting about, mainly about etiquette and, you know, how to behave.
Okay.
And I appreciated that.
Can I jump in before Legislative Breakfast? Because I remember.
I guess so.
So Information Exchange was fascinating. It was effective advocacy to really prepare for the Legislative Breakfast.
Did I, did I help?
You did. And, and what they did was fun, which was, they asked for volunteers ahead of time. And so some board members and superintendents acted as the legislators, or the people who would be at the table for Legislative Breakfast. And it was helpful for both newer board members and for existing, to just have that, remember on how to have those conversations. And they, they played it up a little bit, and we know as we meet with legislators, there were some who will never give you a straight answer, and others that would. were some who will never give you a straight answer, and others that will pretty say no all the time, and others who are supportive. And so they, it was kind of a fun activity to bring sort of this idea of, of how to advocate. And one of the pieces that I think Krista reminded me when you mentioned is, you know, when, when we're there at Legislative Breakfast, which we'll talk about, is it's really advocating on behalf of Monroe County School Boards Association, not your own individual belief or your district's individual need, because there is power and advocacy around the, the county organization. And so that really was Information Exchange on how to do that. And also the etiquette piece, which is, they had some examples of districts or individuals who've really tried to segue into something that they want to advocate for. And the information is, you can always reach out as a, as a board member, as a private citizen, to, to advocate for your need, but really staying on, on point with Monroe County School Boards. And so again, we know that, that advocacy is more effective when an organization is working with sort of a, a position paper and a single voice. And so that was what it was. Really, thank you for allowing me the time to remember.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Grace. All right, Legislative Breakfast. Who wants to speak, or do you all want to speak?
I think Kristin.
Do you want me to? Well, Mark's a table leader.
Just, oh, nice.
Just saying.
Yeah.
I was the note taker.
All right, well, and she, and a very important role at that, because I'm terrible at it. As a recap to what this is, this is an annual event. It is really probably the, one of the two high, main parts of the Legislative Committee. This is where we have breakfast with our local representatives and talk about the issues. It's, it's very informal, you know, the, it's, people can talk frankly, we can talk about our needs, they can explain things to us. It's a good opportunity to share information and educate people. We had a good representation of either our local representatives or their staff. Joe Morelli was able, came by, which, you know, considering he's in the big league now and at the federal, at the Congress, he still comes by and spends time with us. He's, now, I was a table leader, and as you mentioned about, you know, not make, not making it about yourself or your district. The nice thing about Monroe County School Board Association is they provide a lot of information, a lot of material for me to use that all the table leaders use to be consistent. So we're not talking about what I feel like. We talk about the specific issues and what our organization, Monroe County School Board Association, you know, wants to hear or wants to share. Now, I was a table leader for our representative, Summer Brook. Unfortunately, that morning, she had a family issue that was, prevented her from coming. So her Chief of Staff got called that morning to show up. Her Chief of Staff started a week before. Now, she's not a neophyte, she was with, and I'm blanking on her name, Joe Morelli's predecessor in Congress.
Louis Slaughter.
Louis Slaughter, thank you. She was on staff at Louis Slaughter's. She's not a neophyte, but she was just coming in cold. So in this case, it was very much a, here's the topics, we brought, we discussed the topics, and the table shared our viewpoints with her. And really, it was a good opportunity, once again, part of this is to hear what the legislators can say, tell them things, but other times, it's a very good educational opportunity because they, a lot of times, have the big picture, but they don't understand the, the implications regarding to implementation, you know, the nuances. So it was a very good opportunity to educate her, get her up to speed. And, and she was a wonderful person who engaged in this. So what we talked about, and I think this was at all the tables, again, the mental health support resources in schools, because we're consuming more of them, we need more help to having mental health resources, because right now, depending on the tier of help, it can take the classroom teacher's time away from the class. So more resources allows a teacher to focus on the class and being, and being pulled away less. Updating the foundationated formula, which is, we talked about, is increasing, but it's also, the formula itself is based on census data that is over 20 years old. So they need to be, basically updating that. Important thing we talked about many years is teacher shortage and reciprocity, state reciprocity. We have a teacher shortage, we have a shortage of teacher, of teachers, a diverse supply. But the biggest issue is state reciprocity. And this is, and this is my opinion, but this is the time that we can really take advantage of, because there's a lot of states where teachers feel pressure, they, they feel maybe not as welcome, and they may, you know, there's a lot of good teachers who might be willing to come to New York State, maybe the cream of the crop, if we can make it easy for them to come here. And this is where to, to improve the ability for state reciprocity to get certified. And again, some of our board members who are teachers can talk about what certification is, this is the time to do that. There, UPK Funding, which we've covered this today, you know, we, more resources on that. Then, as we also talked about today, is the aidability of the CTE, Career and Technical Education Support. As Dr. Driffl mentioned, it's 30,000, we'd like to get it up to 60,000, which means it's, that's the amount of money that will be aidable for that. So that's what we covered, and that's what I covered at that table. Now, you two went to other tables.
We were at the same, second table. And I'm gonna let you.
And I'm gonna slaughter his name. So we were at Brian McClellan, I can spell it, I can't say it. You know who I'm referencing, this table? He represents specifically Webster. What I liked about him is honestly, he just wanted to hear what we had to say. He gave us like his thoughts on things, but he really just was like, what are your thoughts? And we talked a lot about some similar things. We talked about teacher recip, it's late, I'm sorry, I can't talk. But we talked about, you know, getting teachers into the classroom, how can we get more teachers into the classroom, looking at teachers that are retired, you know, lifting, going from $30,000 and lifting that so that we can staff our schools and help with our staff's shortages. We talked about lunches and free lunches for students and how we could. Talked a lot about collegiality at that table. Brian's original path in life was he was a farmer, so we had mentioned, and when I was talking to him, you know, how, how can we like even take, you know, subsidizing lunches from our farmers and using, utilizing like agriculture, and really starting to look at things from a different angle and really being more collegial and interrelating or intersecting different parts of our needs for our state. So, but a lot of, he did a lot of listening, which was really powerful, I think. I think he took a lot in. And he was like, here's my card, I know I don't necessarily represent, because people at our table were not, none of us were Webster. I think we were just BOSI's in Penfield, right? I think we were just BOSI's in Penfield. But he's like, I don't care that I don't represent you per se, if you have questions, please reach out. And so he was a really good listener. That's all I can ask for, I think, at that point.
Thank you. Okay, Committee, or District Community Committee Meetings. Who wrote that? Okay, anyway, Code of Conduct.
Um, let's see. We continue to look at four different Code of Conducts from different districts. Syracuse, correct me if I'm wrong, but Syracuse, Fairport, Pittsford.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, and then ours.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there were four altogether, right. And we talked about what we liked and didn't like, what we might want to adopt. We talked about the strength of having a rubric for disciplinary action without being overly prescriptive. What I took away from it is a rubric with wiggle room, so that it's not too subjective, but it's not, there, there is some room for subjectivity. And we talked about the meeting that's gonna be at the end of March for the community to come and see the draft. Let me see anything.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right, is there any, there's no unfinished business. Is there any new business? All right, this is my favorite time. I have recommended action to adjourn. So can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 9:21?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, all is in favor and unopposed. The meeting is adjourned at 9:21.
Good job.